Okay, I'd like to call to order the meeting of Santa Barbara School District for Tuesday, August 23rd, 2011. We will begin with the flag salute.
Ready, begin.
Our flag is the flag of the United States of America and the true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, thank you. We have our translator here to introduce herself.
Good evening. Buenas noches. My name is Sandra Trujillo and I'm the interpreter for the reunion this night. If anyone needs my services, I'll be located in the back of this room. Gracias.
Thank you. Okay, and we also have headsets available for anyone who needs assistive hearing technology, as noted on the screen. That brings us to introductions, proclamations, presentations, or recognitions. Do we have any tonight?
Yes, we do. As everyone's aware, every state and every school in California has been working hard to ensure that all of our students have their T-DAP vaccinations and their address verified in order to be in our schools, ready to learn on Thursday. Tonight, we really welcome our hard-working registrars in our secondary schools. These, and they're all ladies, these ladies have done an incredible amount of work this summer and particularly the last couple of weeks. And thus far, paperwork has been completed for more than 85,000 students in both the T-DAP and address verification. And I'd like to please ask them to stand so we can recognize them. Yolanda Navarez from Dos Pueblos High School. Is Yolanda here? Okay. Dora Gonzalez from Santa Barbara High School. Camara Alonso from La Cuesta and Alta Vista. And not with us tonight, and they should be recognized, are Marcia Gonzalez from Galleta Valley Junior High School. Flora Espino from San Marcos High School. Sharon Myers from Santa Barbara Junior High School. Frankie Gallardo from La Colina Junior High School. And Gloria Rodriguez from La Cumbre Junior High. I think every one of these registrars would state that it's not, they haven't done it by themselves. There's been a lot of other people who've done a lot of hard work as well, and those would include our health assistants, all of our secretaries, our counselors, our teachers, our principals, assistant principals, and our parent groups have done a great job as well. And at the district level, we'd really like to thank Marlon Sumpner, Barbara Kiani, Davis Hayden, Diane Hammer, Sasha Javadi, Nurse Michelle Melendez, and translator Mina Thorkinson, who've worked tirelessly on the project to ensure that all of our kids are vaccinated and ready for school on Thursday, August 25th. So, thank you all very much for your hard Well, tonight, I have a very, very wonderful honor, and that's to welcome our new principal of the Santa Barbara Community Academy, Elisa Sabaya Santana. I have to say that she is an experienced bilingual teacher and school administrator working where I just left a lot of her time, the San Joaquin Valley. She worked with smaller learning communities, English as a second language teacher. She oversaw a lot of staff development per professional training, parent outreach and education, did some grant writing, and is well-versed in curriculum. She has an extensive administrative experience as not only a principal, but as an assistant principal and the director of English Language Learner Programs and migrant education as well. And I have to say that when I spoke to her, her now former superintendent, and asked about her character, he told me that she was kind, compassionate, hard-working, courageous, inventive, and very, very committed to ensuring that all the students in her school get whatever it takes to be successful. Really happy to introduce her to our community tonight, and I look forward to introducing her to her school community tomorrow morning. Welcome.
Ms. Sabaya Santana, on behalf of the board, I'd like to welcome you to our district. And if you would like to come to the podium and make any remarks, you're welcome to do so. We are very, very happy to have you joining us.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the privilege, for the honor to serve the children of, the children, the staff, the families of the Santa Barbara Community Academy. I am beyond thrilled, and I will fulfill the, how do I say, the reputation of being committed? You wait. I promise. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you, and welcome to our district.
Well, I'm also pleased to announce that we have three new deans in our secondary schools. Dan Garski, a longtime music educator at San Marcos High School, will be the dean at San Marcos High School. Mitch Torina, a longtime counselor and educator in our district, the dean at Galleta Valley Junior High School. And Nia Vos, a science teacher and expert in science curriculum, will be the dean at Dos Pueblos High School. I do want to let you know, our two-day leadership meeting was held this past week. We covered a whole range of topics. We explored the book Switch by the Heath Brothers. I hope you all had a chance or an opportunity to read that as well. Had a lot of great conversations. But not only did we discuss change and making sure we always examine the bright spots in our district, we also looked at strategies on teaching and learning. We spent a significant amount of time on anti-bullying. We talked about legal issues facing schools and school districts. In particular, we focused on co-curricular fees and donations. We had a great presentation from Robin Sowoski and her team on transitioning to the Common Core, and we spent a lot of time talking about personal accountability and accountability to our students and our community. We really had engaging two days, and it was a lot of fun to reconnect with the staff and to get to know the people I don't know as well. As I stated earlier, our first day of school is in two days. And I have just spent the last two days visiting all of our campuses, and I'm so excited to say that we are ready. Our kids are going to be welcomed with open arms. Our schools are open and ready for business, and teachers are excited to have those children walk through the doors. So, we're expecting to see, in our secondary district alone, about 9,733 students, which is up slightly from last year. And we might be pleasantly surprised with an increase in our elementary enrollment as well, so we'll see. So, that would conclude my report.
Thank you very, thank you very much, Dr. Cash. And with the board's indulgence, I'm going to jump ahead to item C3 and then come back to C2 because it follows up on the superintendent's report very, very clearly. I just wanted to announce the action from closed session. We had a motion to approve the appointment of Dan Garski, Mitch Torina, and Nia Vos as the new deans, and that the motion was made by Ms. Parker, seconded by Ms. Deacon, and it was approved on a vote of 5-0. We also had a motion to approve the appointment of Ms. Sabaya Santana to the principal at the Community Academy, and that motion was made by Ms. Deacon and seconded by Mr. Heron and approved 5-0, on a vote of 5-0. So, those were the two items to report out from the closed session, and they follow up on the appointments that you just heard about. So, now we will return back to item C2, Board Comments and Correspondence. Do we have any comments or correspondence from the board? Ms. Herron?
I have a few things. I guess, I visit a lot of campuses too, and I guess I am overly pleased at what I saw. And I guess the highlight would have to be Santa Barbara High School. It's absolutely gorgeous. So, whatever your staff is doing there, Mr. Hattjunk, it's just beautiful. And the other highlight would be Dos Pueblos. I'm so happy to see that the staff parking lot, at least under the conditions we're under, has transformed, along with the landscaping in the park, in that parking lot and around the campus. So, those were two highlights that I saw. I didn't see anything. Everything looks good, and so I was very, very pleased at the way our campus, obviously with more money, we could do a heck of a lot more. And I hope we can do that as time goes by. But at least it's presentable in a nice way for the kids to go back to school, and I think the environment is so important. I had a correspondence after the Galleta City Council had a meeting last week on the Bishop Ranch, where 1,100 homes are planned. And the comment was, Superintendent Boomer was there with a request that if, in fact, it ever goes through, that with 1,100 houses, there better be a space for an elementary school provided by the developer, along with building a school by the developer. And the question I got was, what about our secondary schools? What about, what's the effect of 1,100 new houses on Dos Pueblos in Galleta Valley? And I brought a copy of a letter that Kathy Boomer, superintendent, sent to the city council. I'll give it to Dr. Cash. But she points out that they weren't involved in the discussions, and they would like to be involved as the time goes by. It may never happen in our lifetime, you know, but if there are discussions going on, I think we should be at least on the table or involved in the communication, because I would presume it might have an effect on our schools. So, that was a communication from one of our constituents. I did go to Campus Point for the Autism Society's annual beach day, and what a pleasure. I mean, to see these students afraid of water when they get there, and when they leave, they don't want to get out of the water. You know, they're on these surfboards, and these young, young people from the Santa Barbara Seals, I guess it is, are dedicating their time to help the youngsters. And it was just a very pleasurable day. It was nice to see. I went to a Partners in Education retreat, where there's a lot of discussion about thousands of hours of donated time by businesspeople, you know, to our schools, and that they will, they will satisfy any need we have. And I noticed in the agenda tonight, there's, in the core curriculum, there's comments about mentors, and they do a lot of mentoring. And so it was, it was put in the spotlight of what this organization can do for our schools and what they've been doing for our schools. It was a well, it was a half-day event. It was very good. Today, I had the pleasure of going to just a snippet of the all-day session with the special ed teachers. And they, it was a great day on inclusion. And the only thing I came away with from the small portion I was there is they can't do it alone. If you want inclusion with general education, and then they were preaching to the choir, because everybody there agreed you need inclusion. But in order for that to be meaningful, the principals and the staff at the schools have to understand the same message. So, I was hoping that that message can get, be gotten to our principals and to our general education staff, that it's very important that these children be, I liked what they said, it's one of the classes 35, not the 35th or the 35th plus one. You know, they are one of the 35 children in that class and need to be part of it. And that's a message, I think, that needs to be heard by a lot of people. So, I think we have a long ways to go on that. But the excitement in the room was absolutely unbelievable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heron. Any other board members? Okay, then we will move forward. Thank you very much. We will move on to item C4, Public Comments. Do we have any public comments at this time?
No.
No, in a rare occurrence, we have no public comments. So, we will move to Acceptance of Donations.
I'll move to Accept the Gratitude.
Thank you.
Second.
Great. We have a motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you very much. And again, we extend our appreciation to our generous community. That brings us to the Consent Agenda. Are there any items that board members wish to pull from the Consent Agenda? Hearing none. Can we get a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The Consent Agenda in full has been passed, 5-0. I'm not sure that's ever happened before. Okay, our Action Agenda, item E1, Second Reading and Approval of Initial Successor Proposal to Open 2011-2014 Negotiations with the Santa Barbara California School Employees Association, CSEA, Chapter 37. Mr. Smith, I think you will be presenting this item?
Thank you. This is presented to the board for a second and final reading in accordance with the RADA Act. We'll be bringing forward our counterproposal, hopefully sometime in September. Unless the board has any questions about it, you've seen it before, we recommend that you approve it.
Okay.
I seem to recall I tried to jump the gun on this last time, so maybe I'll go ahead and make a motion that the board approve for the final reading the initial successor proposal to open the 2011-2014 negotiations with CSEA, Chapter 37.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion on this? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries 5-0. That brings us to item E2, the Second Reading and Approval of the Administrative Regulation 3311 Bids. And Mr. Hattjunk, I think you are going to be presenting this item to us?
Board members, Dr. Cash, this item was not passed with the other 3,000s in the series because we wanted to have a chance to review it and include some language on the Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act and lease-back, and those additions are shown, and in the final version. Be happy to address any questions that you have.
Are there any questions for Mr. Hattjunk?
I don't have any questions, but I'm guessing that it meant to say Santa Barbara Unified School District, not Santa Barbara, Santa Unified Barbara.
Oops, where did I do that?
It's the title.
We just have the word out of order.
Ah, I'll make that correction.
Okay, then, do we have a motion for this?
I'll make a motion. I was also intrigued and I guess happy to see that the formal bid limit has been raised to 175,000 since we last looked at this, so.
And there's talk about raising it slightly again, and I think it's 187.5 there.
187.5 effective January 1st, 2012.
Really?
And there's been some talk about raising the lower limit, but we haven't had anything substantially come through yet. I apologize for the typo error. I am my own secretary, so I have no one to blame for myself.
Well, I will go ahead and move to approve the, what shall I call this, the Second Reading and Approval of Administrative Regulation 3311 Bids.
Okay, motion. Is there a second?
I will second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries 5-0. Item E3, Approval of the Godby Research to Conduct a Parcel Tax Measure Feasibility Study. And Mr. Smith, I believe you will be introducing this item?
Thank you, Madam President. As the board knows, in March of 2008, we circulated a request for proposals to community opinion research firms. During that process, we made a final selection of Godby Research to perform a community opinion survey relative to looking at the feasibility of a proposed parcel tax. I think we all know how that ended up with Measure H and Measure I. A couple years later, when we contemplated going out for a general obligation bond in each of the former districts, we once again called on Godby Research. Now with the Measure H and Measure I parcel taxes poised to sunset in June 30th of 2012, 13, I always get that confused, 13, it's important that we start the process now of planning for an extension or, and/or an expansion of the existing parcel taxes. So, given our prior successes with Godby Research, I didn't think it was necessary to go out and circulate another RFP. I asked them for a proposal. I brought that forth. Representatives from Godby are here to answer any questions you might have about the proposal. And I suggest we probably do that before the board goes any further, and so, I know there's questions.
Hi, I'm Charles Hester. I'm the Vice President of Business Development and Project Strategy for Godby Research. I haven't been here in a couple of years. It's good to see old faces and perhaps some new faces, and hear about all the changes that have been going on with now the Unified School District. Congratulations on the Thompson bill.
Thank you.
Sure.
Do we have questions for Mr. Hester? Ms. Lamone?
One of the questions that I have is regarding the difference between the 15 and 18 minutes and also the 600 versus 800 participants or subjects. How, I mean, a larger sample size for research is always better, but in this case, it's $5,000 to $6,000 difference. So, how much more, how much more reliable information are we going to get by jumping to the 18 minutes? That's my part A. And B is the 800 subjects.
I think we should take a step back and maybe talk about the election cycles that would be under consideration if, and that would really drive our recommendation for sample size. If we're looking at something, let's say, from June 2012 to June 2013, I'd want a larger sample size. And it wouldn't have to be necessarily 800. It could be 700. I just want enough interviews with, let's say, the June 2012 electorate and the November 2012 electorate and the June 2013 electorate, which are, will be vastly different in terms of not only overall turnout, but partisanship and just voter demographics in those different election cycles. If we're going to look at maybe just the high propensity election cycles, maybe June 2012 and November 2012, because we certainly had success in November 2008 in the last presidential general election, I would think that we could probably do a sample size of 600. Historically, we did 800 for the first parcel tax. I think we could relax that potentially a little bit. We did 600 for the two bonds in November of 2010. So, my recommendation at this point, if we were looking at the high propensity universe, it would be somewhere 600, maybe 700 interviews. So, I'd like, in the proposal, wanted to give you sort of the minimum and the maximum of it. Going back, I believe that the survey length for the parcel taxes in 2008 was an 18-minute survey. I think we can probably be a little bit more efficient there and look at some of the items, projects, and programs, and arguments that tested very poorly among the electorate, and maybe get that down. So, if I were asked to make a recommendation on sample size and survey length, I think we could probably get away with a 15-minute survey of 600 voters, perhaps, perhaps 700 voters, depending again on what election cycles we're actually going to be looking at for the parcel taxes.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Additional questions? Mr. Heron?
I wasn't here four years ago when you did the parcel tax, but refresh my memory. Did the board, before you did your survey, have an idea of what they needed, and therefore your survey sort of, you know, we knew we needed class size reduction in math, and we knew we needed arts and science and technology and music. And did your survey verify that those were acceptable to the voting public?
In terms of general needs, yes. I mean, we don't need to be so specific in terms of, you know, what we'd be looking to hire, let's say, you know, 12 new teachers or at that level of specificity. We'd need a general idea of where the money would go, as well as, you know, since it's an existing parcel tax, and you need to look at sort of the flip side of the coin on what happens if this parcel tax isn't renewed. We'd also want to look at what might go away. And that's part of the process that we would do, working iteratively with the district and through a committee, is sort of identify those needs as we're developing the questionnaire, and then move forward, give the board a chance to react to the questionnaire, and then go ahead and field the survey, once the board's comfortable with the direction that we're going with, what we're going to be testing in the poll.
Thank you.
You know, I might add to that, board member Heron. I can tell you that from a staff perspective, we had a battery of things that we wanted to test, and some things were great things, but they did not test well. And so, that kind of circumscribed how we went forward, the things that tested well that aligned with things that we desired to have.
Absolutely.
Ms. Parker?
So, we will go through that process before you go out and start your survey?
We would, we would go through that with you. We'd be working with the, whatever committee that might be, if it's just administration or perhaps a couple of board members. We certainly don't want to violate the Brown Act. But that would be part of the questionnaire drafting process, so that we can give you as customized a questionnaire based on your needs and where you think the electorate is as possible. Sure.
Ms. Parker?
I feel so proactive this time, because the last time we were going through this process, I remember we were scrambling in the spring. There was no question. We could not do a June election. You know, it was November or nothing. So, it's, I was really surprised to see this on the agenda and just felt like, wow, we are, we are on top of it this time. So, thank you. Godby has done a terrific job for us in the past. I certainly, as a board member, have been more than pleased with the results that we've gotten and our ability to shape our measures based on the surveys that we've gotten back. My question is really, I think, for Mr. Smith, and that is, the recommendation is that we approve Godby Research to conduct a parcel tax measure feasibility study. Is that where you want the motion to stay and not get into the specifics of 600 versus 800, 15 minutes versus 18 minutes? Do you simply want us to approve?
Well, I think if you approve a not-to-exceed-dollar amount, anything could fall within that umbrella.
Okay, so essentially not to exceed the 32,680?
Whatever the board's comfortable with.
All right.
I mean, I think what I see is a low and a high, so I think what you were really proposing, a mid-range. If you're not comfortable going to the high, maybe you're comfortable going to 2/3 of that amount or something, and that would probably cover the survey analysis we're looking at.
Ms. Deacon?
Thank you. Well, I'd like to say it's very refreshing to have someone come before us and actually advocate for not the highest amount in terms of the expense. So, I was happy to hear that 600 in 15 minutes might work just fine, given that this is the third time you've done this study for us. I'm assuming that you do get some advantage having worked with us before and with our population to a certain extent. And I also think you've done a great job, and we've been so successful, and really a model in the state in many ways. I would hope that we will really focus on this tax threshold piece, because I think, you know, I don't want to get overly optimistic, but if, we do have a very supportive community. Santa Barbara Education Foundation did a terrific job doing the kind of the local piece here for us. I want to make sure we ask for enough, and so I want to make sure that we really test that carefully. Also, I'm not sure if you gave a recommendation about when you thought would be better to do it. I was, my gut reaction is, is November 2012, because of the turnout might be ideal, given the demographics and the voter persuasion in our community.
I think that November 2012 and, or excuse me, 2008 and November 2010 sort of presented a dichotomy of thinking among the electorate in general in California. In November 2008, parcel taxes and bonds for school districts were widely successful, and as you probably know, as a board, as probably personally, we were just sort of easing into what has been, you know, a three-year recession, and it looks like it's going to continue for at least the next six months. November 2010 was quite the opposite, where you had, at least in my opinion, an impact at the city and school district and county level of sort of what was going on at the gubernatorial level in terms of smaller government and public sector employees and pensions and things like that. And school district parcel taxes did horrible. There were only two in the state that passed. Berkeley was one of them, which is obviously an outlier. The other one was Fremont Unified. I think that our recommendation, and part of my recommendation for 600 and 700, is we certainly want to look at November 2012, but we probably, in this case, want to look at a couple of different election cycles as well, so that we're positioning the district for the election cycle that's going to be most advantageous for you.
Okay, thank you. And I see Mr. Price popped in briefly here. I just wanted to thank him and our staff for the efforts up in Sacramento to make sure that we could actually do this, because I know that was a lot of work to carve out the special legislation that allowed us to be able to actually put these measures on the ballot.
Well, we believe we can do it. Well, we believe we can do it in the absence of statutory authority, but, I mean, that's what our petition says for unification, but it sure helps having the legislation on the governor's desk right now, so.
Is that where it is right now?
Yeah.
Okay.
One other thing, I know the last time we went through this, because we just kind of wanted to get our foot in the dorm, I don't think we ever tested term. So, is that something we would look at this time?
We would absolutely look at the, and the term you mean the length of the?
The length.
Yeah, absolutely. Parcel taxes, since yours in 2008, there's been a variety of special elections, obviously the June and November 2010, are tending to go from four to seven years with, you know, if I put my finger in the wind and certainly I'd want to do the poll before I
Right.
set that in stone, I would guess that you are likely to be able to get a little bit longer of a duration of parcel tax. It's been my history, going back 10 years, that the first one is sort of, okay, you know, let's see what the district does with the money and then the ones that come after that are usually voters are, now that they've got a history of parcel tax in the district, are willing to give you a little bit longer duration. But yes, that would be something we'd test in the survey.
Mr. Herron?
Yeah, I would like to just comment on Mrs. Deacon's comment. I know the intent of the comment, but I want to make it very clear that I want to know we need the money and how we're going to use it before we ask the public for it. It's not just a matter of can we get, instead of 27, can we get 30 or can we get 35? How do we use the existing money? Do we still, are those needs still something we have to do? What the public has heard is we just got an influx of $6 million a year. Now, they may not have heard that we were $10 million in the hole, you know, but they're going to listen, hey, you just got $6 million a year, why do you now need to come back to us? So, I'm hoping that we really look at this and say, here is what we need and we can't do it without this and it's going to cost, you know, X dollars, and we take that to the public, but not just because we were successful, therefore let's extend it another six years or 10 years and let's go for $50 instead of 27. We better have a need and we better be able to enunciate that need.
I consider that very important work out of the superintendent's office to
Thank you.
help gather input from our community and bring to the board what hopefully won't be an exhaustive list, but will be a very definitive list of what our needs would be and how a parcel tax would help meet those needs for students in our community.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. Ms. Parker?
And I would just add on to that, that I do think that the community knows that over the, over the past three years or so, we've lost $20 million in the district and we've lost so much that I feel like this, this time, it's going to be a very different conversation because part of the conversation is going to need to be about what we've lost and is there any possibility, does the community support bringing some of those things back that are gone? And the last time around, it was more like, you know, let's save just the arts or something like that and it's, unfortunately, it's really changed, although I think that the arts are important and I hope that we can keep that as part of the parcel tax. I would like to go ahead and move to approve Godbe Research to conduct a parcel tax measure feasibility study in an amount not to exceed 33,680.
I would actually like to just make a comment before we vote on this, but if somebody wants to second the motion before I do that, we can certainly do that.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion made and seconded. And I'll just comment, first of all, I want to echo the comments that were made earlier about all the work, both the work that Godbe has done for us in the past and how pleased we are with it. I think all of us, as you've heard, find it to be, you know, really excellent quality and we appreciate the professionalism that you've put into the work that you've done for us in the past. And I, and also to echo the comments for the staff in our, in our district, both Mr. Smith and Mr. Price, as well as others, for the work on our, on behalf of this legislation as well. But I also wanted to just say a little bit in response to your comment, Ms. Parker, about folk kind of looking at what we might be able to bring back. I personally think, given the fact that our community as well, I think, is fairly aware of how much we've lost, the notion that if the parcel tax were to end, that we could be faced with losing more, I think is a frightening thought and one that would really resonate with our community, that we kind of were able to stay afloat really through this parcel tax. And without it, we would have been in much worse, a much worse situation and we could still be there if it were to go away. So, I'd like to see us emphasize that aspect of it, too.
Absolutely.
So, anyways, okay, so now I think we can go, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Herron?
Yeah, I'd like to amend the motion to change the 33,680 number to 30,000. I think that gives enough flexibility, based upon what I've heard, that we don't need the maximum.
Okay. Is the baker of the motion willing to accept that amendment?
Sure. I didn't want to get too nitpicky about it, but that's fine with me if that's, and I hadn't, I didn't run the calculation of about 2/3.
We can certainly work within that budget with the 15-minute, even 800, but certainly the 600, 15 or 18-minute or even 700, 15 or 18 minutes, we can certainly work within that budget.
Okay, great. Okay, so then we've accepted the amendment. So, the motion as amended, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, well, thank you very much, Mr. Hester. Thank you for being here and we look forward to getting your, working with you on this. Now, we move on to item E4, Approval of Santa Barbara Unified School District's Response to Santa Barbara Grand County Civil, wait, I think we have too many grands in there. The Santa Barbara County Civil Grand Jury Report, Local Government Post-Employment Benefits in Santa Barbara County, Complicated and Costly. So, Mr. Smith, you're presenting this report to us?
Yes, thank you.
Our grand report?
I guess, yeah, our grand report. I guess it's our month to respond to grand jury reports. I don't think it's any surprise to anybody here, there's been a lot of scrutiny relative to issues with pensions and post-retirement benefits for public agencies. That compelled the grand jury to do an investigation or report of cities and counties and school districts within Santa Barbara County. What you have here is their report with nine recommendations for pertaining to us. So, what I'd like to do is read the recommendations and then kind of paraphrase our responses. And then, since we have to respond by a certain deadline, this will be an action item and we'll ask for approval on this item. So, the first recommendation that pertains to us was grand jury recommendation number one that says, "No later than January 1, 2012, all governmental agencies that belong to multiple employer pension pools obtain and for each year thereafter, make publicly available estimates of their individual unfunded actuary liability from an actuary or plan sponsor." Well, we belong to a statewide pool, both for certificated and classified employees, the CalPERS pool for classified and CalSTRS. We don't have that information readily available to provide to them. The unfunded liability is actually impacted by a change in employer contribution rates, so it's not something we have under control that CalSTRS and CalPERS boards do. So, we've essentially responded that we're not going to implement that recommendation because we don't have, we don't have that information readily available and we can't impact those kind of changes. So, that would be our first response. Grand jury recommendation number 2A is that not later than January 1, 2012, in the best interests of ratepayers and taxpayers, each government agency that contributes some part, some or part of healthcare premiums for employees, adopt an implementation plan to reduce those contributions. And where Mr. Hetjung had a typo, I have a full-scale omission in my response here, then I'm going to insert some language. Our response is that we've already taken significant steps to curtail our post-retirement liability by eliminating lifetime benefits for certificated, classified and management employees. Post-retirement benefits are granted for active employees, that's the language that needs to be inserted, are granted for active employees who have reached age 55 and rendered at least 10 years of service or when they become Medicare eligible. Even then, the maximum benefit is $1,000 per year until such time the retiree reaches the age of 65. So, that's the first issue. Lastly, any changes that are non-management in nature, if they pertain to our classified or certificated, are within the scope of bargaining and would have to be negotiated. So, that's our second response. Grand jury recommendation 2B, that not later than January 1, 2012, in the best interests of ratepayers and taxpayers, each government agency that contributes some or part of healthcare premiums for employees, implement pre-funding their current unfunded healthcare liability. And I think that calls for an explanation of what pre-funding is. Every few years, we get an actuarial, actuarial study done of our post-retirement benefit liability and the way that's calculated under GASBY is if you looked at everybody, active employees that are entitled to the benefit based on an actuarial estimate that they're going to render at least 10 years of service and become age 55, and everybody that's out there retired based on longevity factors and that will ultimately drop off because they're going to go away, you look at what the cost is of that total liability, okay? And that total liability is identified as a 30-year timeframe, but then you take that and you amortize it over 20 years. Like if you had an $8 million liability, what would it take on a per-year basis to pay for that for over 20 years? Then you tack that on to what you're currently paying on your pay-as-you-go and that's pre-funding. So, you can either dig into your general fund on an annual basis and go to a tiered rate where you're actually paying for that on top, or you slush a bunch of cash away in some fund and then move it over. Well, in these economic times, that's almost impossible to do. So, our response says that, you know, we're a political subdivision of the state and, you know, we're highly dependent, if not solely dependent, on general purpose revenue limit from the state of California, which we receive 80 cents on the dollar right now. Given that we've made some strides to reduce our overall liability, in the event that that liability is reduced significantly in the future and/or the state fully funds our general purpose dollars, we can look at pre-funding, but it's not feasible, pre-funding in the future, but it's not feasible at this time. I said more that's in the comment, but that's what it means. Okay, and then the last recommendation was grand jury recommendation number three, that no later than January 1, 2012, in the best interests of taxpayers and ratepayers and taxpayers, each government agency that has compensated absence liabilities, adopt an implementation plan to reduce each agency compensated absence liability. Well, we've already taken steps to partially implement this recommendation. The district has reduced the amount of vacation and compensation time an employee can carry over from year to year. We're a little bit different in the sense that certificated employees don't accrue vacation and both classified and management employees are limited to 28, they can't carry over than more than 28 days per year. And so, that's how we've responded to that as well. So, unless there's any questions about the recommendations, and obviously we need to modify and insert that language on the response to grand jury recommendation 2A, we'd be asking for your approval so we can submit this to the grand jury.
Okay. I have just a quick question. When we submit a response to the grand jury in which we say, for a variety of reasons, we're not going to implement your recommendations, do they ever respond back to us?
This will be my first time, so I don't know.
Okay. It seemed to me, I'm sorry, it seemed to me in the, in their recommendations, they're really concerned with making, with protecting the public trust.
Correct.
And making sure that we are also taking steps to protect the public trust. And the response seems to suggest that we are. We're not doing the things necessarily as they outline them, but we are taking steps and we are very much aware of that responsibility. So, I don't think we're completely disregarding the recommendations.
I would agree. I think part of it's being fiscally transparent, but then also remember, school districts, especially with the pension issue, are in a lot different boat than cities and counties because most of those are self-funded. And so, what happens is that if you start bestowing benefits on employees that outstrip your ability to pay, that's why those type of agencies get into trouble on those issues. So, you know, we're restricted by what happens through CalSTRS and CalPERS and, as you can see, that's still a subject to reform at the legislative level.
Dr. Cash, did you want to make?
I was just going to say that there's a great likelihood the grand jury will take, collect all the responses, meet again and decide what to do with the responses.
Other board members? Mr. Herron?
Yes, Mr. Smith. A year ago, two years ago, we had a complete study done on how we stand versus the long-term.
We're in process of having that done and actually, I just have, there's some cleanup they need to do, the actuarial, and it's just something's on my desk right now to sign. I thought we were much further along, but given our changes in payroll and everything, the ball kind of got dropped, but we're back on it now.
But we had one, what, two years ago?
Yeah, usually, it used to be you were required under ed code every three years, but now I think even the criterion standards ask for it every two years still, although I don't know why it asked for it because it's not called for in the code, but we're going to get it to you.
Okay. Well, I'd just like to comment, I think between our staff and the bargaining units, we've done a great job being proactive on all these issues.
Yes.
And so, I thank everyone who's been involved in that over the years, but we've, we've gone overboard trying to be protective and understand the long-term potential problems. So, I think we've done very well.
Yeah, and actually comparatively, a lot of districts, you know, that eliminated the lifetime benefits in the 80s, there's still a lot of districts that offer benefits from 55 to 65 full boat, you know, or $7,800 or $8,500 per year. I mean, we're nowhere near that and, you know, the only way you can affect your overall liability is either you increase the number of years in terms of when you become eligible, you grandfather a certain population in and stop a new, and we've done some of that. And all of that will show up in your actuarial because remember, it's extrapolated out. They take that population, look who are the actives now, when they will become retirement eligible and what kind of benefit is bestowed on them in the future as opposed to what's going on now. And you'll see all that. You'll see, you'll see the impact of those policy changes you made in the next actuarial.
If there are no further comments, we can entertain a motion. Mr. Herron?
I move approval of Santa Barbara Unified School District's response to the Santa Barbara County Grand Jury Civil Report, locally, Local Government Post-Employment Benefits in Santa Barbara County, Complicated and Costly, with the additions that Mr. Smith added.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries 5-0. We are currently at item E5, Acceptance of Renewal of Joint Use Agreement with Santa Barbara Community Academy Youth Performing Arts Center for the Marjorie Luke Theater at Santa Barbara Junior High School. And Mr. Hetjung, I think you will be presenting this item to us.
Madam President, Dr. Cash, I was absent at the last meeting and I understand that as part of the discussion, there was a concern over item one in the agreement, the term of the agreement, clarifying the number of renewals. I created some language based on what I thought the board wanted to see from my knowledge of talking to people who were at the meeting. Last Tuesday, I crafted that and sent it off to Jerry Fawcett, the president of CIPAC. There was two attachments. One was the agreement and the second one was the agreement with the changes. Jerry did not see the second agreement right away and did not notice what the changes exactly were until after the agenda item got printed. And so, CIPAC has some concerns. She's not able to be here tonight, but Rod Latham is here. If you remember Rod, one of the founding board members of CIPAC, very active in that community. And so, that's the basic changes from the last time and I think Rod has a speaker slip in. to speak, and based on how the discussion goes, I would ask the board, as the representative of CIPEC and corresponding with this MOU, that we may want to allow him more than three minutes once you have a discussion amongst yourselves.
Okay. I just have a quick question to, to clarify for me. The language or the little explanation that you have on the cover sheet in the indented paragraph, where it says the current agreement has expired and minor changes reflected, et That tries to explain the term, but would, would there actually be any change to the language in, that we have in the document?
Yeah, the previous-
Under item one?
Yeah, the, the, the current paragraph has changed in the last board meeting in that we talk about the five-year agreement with the right to extend for one five-year period. I think there was some question of how long the agreement really is, and that's why Mr. Price is here tonight.
Okay.
Because, because the board may have questions on that.
And so, that, that language is remaining the same as it is printed here?
Yeah. In other words, my, my, my proposal, based on what I thought the board wanted to see, is, is basically contained on page two, item one, term of agreement, where we talk about the center has the right to extend this agreement for one additional five-year period upon terms that may be agreed to by the center and the district.
Okay.
That is the language that has changed since last time.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Then, Mr. Latham, if you'd like to come up to the podium? And, Mr. Latham, do, do you feel that you need more than three minutes to address us?
I don't thi- hopefully not, no.
Okay.
Our only concern, and I represent the board of directors here, is that the intent of this agreement is one of ongoing partnership between the two entities, between the district and CIPEC. The most important point I want to share with you is that, as we have, have been doing since nineteen ninety successfully, and, and I think that the, the Luke, unless there's any contesting this, I think the Luke is, is a pretty shining example of a great partnership, of a collaboration. And what our board is responsible for is fundraising and making sure that, that, that partnership is respected, that the Luke is respected and kept in pristine shape as it is, and also fundraising so that we can continue, you know, successfully down this road. Our funders, when they look at our documents, are interested in knowing, particularly when we're doing equipment that has a five-to-ten-year lifespan, or even, even when we're going to, say, the Santa Barbara Foundation or the Hutton Foundation, and we're looking for long-term support, for staff support, for operating, because of the hundred-and-some-odd groups in the community that use the theater, they want to see that we're not going to go away in five years. And they're very specific about that. And so, if, if this contract, if this agreement sheds light on the fact that in five years this could all be over, that's really going to be detrimental to our well-being, both the school, CIPEC, everybody. And I just don't want to see that damaged.
Is the language, the way that it's currently drafted, suitable for the needs?
No.
No, okay.
And, and we're not asking for any great things, literally one word or, or something, and I'm going to refer to, to Mr. Price because he's the attorney and I'm not an attorney. And you might be able to, to assist us if, if, if the board is amenable to this. The concept of renewable is, I think, what we're looking for, so that we know that this is an, an ongoing partnership, an ongoing relationship, and it's renewable every five years with the understanding that we sit down, as we do every five years, and make sure everything is hunky-dory. But if it, if it appears on paper that, you know, there, that this is, has a term limit to it, then our funders are, are going to shy away from, from supporting this.
Okay. So, I'm, when I read it, and it says, "This agreement shall remain in effect for a period of five years from the date hereof, and the center has the right to extend this agreement for an additional, for one additional five-year period upon terms as may be agreed to by the center and the district." Is there something problematic in that language?
I think a slight change to say that, in effect, do you have a copy that I can read from? It's out of my head.
I think you want to just take out the word one.
Yeah.
And then-
Renewable each, every five years.
Four additional five-year periods.
Okay.
Is it the one additional five-year?
Yeah.
That's causing the problem?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. That's, that's the bugaboo.
So, if we were to eliminate one and say, to extend this agreement for additional five-year periods?
Yep. Exactly. Periods.
Okay. And-
That would, that would help a lot.
Okay. And, I don't know, I, I'm assuming, I don't know if there are any objections to that by the board?
Well, the la- the, the language was changed upon my, not knowing exactly what the intent was. The way I read the previous language at the last meeting, we were giving you a twenty-year new agreement, and, and that was not the intent of anything I could find in history, that this was an ongoing twenty-year document. Now, the things you're concerned about, you know, if you go further, clause thirteen says in ninety days, we can end the agreement under certain circumstances. Either party can. So, if you're looking for funders for a long-term, that clause thirteen would scare me more than this one would scare me, because it says we can make a change in ninety days. Now, granted, if there's a twenty-year obligation, it might be harder to break that in ninety days than if there's a five-year obligation. But my intent is purely to make sure that what is in here is what the intent of the board is.
And what, what is the intent of the board? I would love to hear that from you. I know I can talk about what our hope and our intent is, but what is the intent of the board in terms of our relationship with you?
I'll just give you mine, since I have the floor.
Thank you.
The intent was not a twenty-year ongoing relationship, renewable every five years for another twenty years. I can find nothing in history that says that was the agreement. Do, do we want this agreement to stay in place for as long as everybody is happy and doing a great job? Absolutely. I don't think there's any intent, you know, not to. I, my intent is to make sure that in five years from now, when I'm not here and maybe others aren't here, that we don't go back and look at it again and say, what was the intent? This new language very definitely is an attempt. I have no problem with the minor changes you made, because, again, every five years, we have to come together-
Correct.
And extend it. And that is far more, your language is far more preferable than to put in writing that it's another twenty-year agreement.
I agree.
Ms. Parker?
Thank you. And I, I agree with Mr. Herron, and I just have, in terms of having no objection to your minor, very minor revision that just makes, takes that one away, which makes it sound like it's one more term as opposed to being able to be successive terms. And I just wanted to check with Mr. Price on that language, just to be sure that there's nothing that we're missing.
Let me ask you a question, sure. If they want to have the same language as the original agreement, it's five years, another one, plus, what was the same in paragraph one except it said plus, in two or three more five-year terms? In other words, if it was identical?
Ideally, it'd be preferable to, that still has a sunset. We'd love to just see the sunset go away and, and be renewable.
Thank you. Forgive me. The board may be aware that this agreement is different than most of your other MOUs, because it's a joint use agreement, and joint use or joint occupancy of school facilities is actually spelled out in the education code. And the ed code provides that the maximum term for such an agreement is five years. So, when this agreement was originally done, we, the committee, CIPEC representatives and Rod and Mr. Hettjung and district representatives talked about really the same issue, and that is, how can we have a partnership that is going to be attractive to outside funders, meaning that it's going to be ongoing, and at the same time, will comply with the law and be limited to five years? So, as you know, originally, it was put in that it would be for an initial five-year term, and then there would be three successive five-year extensions that would be available. But then, the safeguard language was put in paragraph thirteen that provides that prior to the end of any five-year term, that the district can give notification of its intent to terminate it, as well as a ninety-day provision. So, I would say that if you were to revert to the same language that was in the original agreement, that is, five-year term plus however many you want to go, two or three additional five-year terms, that would provide, I think, additional comfort to funders as far as what the district's intent is in maintaining this partnership without losing your ability to make changes in the event that something were to come up that would cause you to want to terminate the agreement sooner, and at the same time, to maintain compliance with the law. So, in other words, I don't see any reason, if the board wants to, why you couldn't, instead of having in paragraph one, have it say, "One additional five-year term, blah, blah, blah," have it be two or even three five-year terms, because you're completely covered by paragraph thirteen.
So, Mr. Price, would it, does it make a substantive difference if we identify the number of successive terms, say, two, three, or if we just eliminate one and say, "Four additional five-year periods"?
I think in terms of the legal requirement, that you should really use the same language that we originally put in there that would have successive five-year terms, because that's what a joint use agreement is supposed to be about, five-year terms. And the idea of having it just be unlimited, I think, is, you know, if somebody was going to say, "Well, this really isn't a five-year agreement," I think that you should have a cap on the number of terms. You can always, in five years from now, have it restate that it's going to be for five plus another three.
Okay. And this does not, that language doesn't obligate us to approve the additional, each additional three, five-year term, right?
Right. Because in-
So, we could-
Paragraph thirteen, you have the opportunity, or if you want to call it opportunity, something happens, and you're able to provide notice prior to the expiration of the next five-year term of your intent not to renew the lease.
So, I'm trying to address the concern that Mr. Herron had, which is, if we say this five years plus three additional five-year terms, that we're essentially entering into a twenty-year contract, but it, you're saying, in fact, we're not, because each, each of those extensions would have to be approved?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Herron?
Yeah. You're the attorney, so let me give you a hypothetical. You use thirteen as a sort of a easy way out, but the way I read thirteen is, if it's not for cause, we have to meet and confer, try to come to an amiable agree, agreement. If we don't, it goes to mediation. Nobody is bound by mediation, it goes to spirit court. In that scenario, if, if six months from now, something happens, we want to get out, so we implement clause thirteen, is it better to have a five-year agreement, ten-year agreement, twenty-agree, agreement, year agreement on the table for negotiation, meet and confer purposes? Doesn't it give the center a huge advantage at a bargaining table that they have a twenty-year potential agreement that we're taking away from them?
I would say no to that. In my estimation, it doesn't. And I remember that language, because I think as the result of a lot of discussion that CIPEC and the board representatives had back when, that language was crafted with my help in order to meet and blend the needs and come to a resolution that would be, that would protect the district fully, but at the same time, would go as far as the district could in advancing the causes of CIPEC. Specifically, paragraph thirteen point three doesn't require mediation with respect to the term, the decision to terminate the agreement early. It says it can be terminated early. If the board were to make that decision, then it calls for there to be a mediation process in order to unfold the relationship in an orderly way. And that recognizes the fact that there are a lot of things, pieces of equipment and so on, that have been brought into the Luke over a period of years. There are staffing issues where these two staff members have been, in effect, classified employees of the district, and there are a number of things that would need to be unwound. And so, it was decided that there would be a process that would be put into place in the event that it should come to pass that the board elected to terminate the agreement.
But we can't exercise that ninety-day agreement until five more year passes, because this is now the start, would be a start of a new, new five-year period, twenty-year period, the way it was written, and this says, "After five years, we can terminate the agreement for anything other than cause." So, by, the way the language was written before, this was a new agreement, so we couldn't use clause thirteen-three until at least five years from now. And I guess I still have to say, I would believe, I'd rather be at the bargaining table with an agreement that gave me another fifteen years or so, rather than one with five years. I think, you know-
Well, not to beat on it, but the, the first sentence talks about the notice of termination that you have the ability to give prior to the end of any five-year term. If you go to the second sentence, that gives the district the right to terminate, other than for cause, at any time, by giving the other party ninety days' written notice, period.
Says following the initial five-year period.
No.
It says-
No.
Second sentence, Mr. Herron.
Starts with the word following.
No, it starts with the word either. Thirteen point three.
That's a change from last week. Okay. I didn't notice that change. What I have in front of me from last week starts with, doesn't say that. From last week, thirteen-three says-
Okay. Well, we're gonna, let's go by the one that we have for-
Okay. I didn't, I, I was reading last week's.
So, in thirteen point three, does that, does that sentence address what you were concerned about?
It, it addresses it better, yes. It, it still bothers me that, I, I still think that a party with a twenty-year agreement is in better shape in meet and confer than a party with five years in an agreement or ten years in an agreement. That's just a basic thought that I would have going to a-
Okay.
Going to somebody saying, "We want to terminate you," and they sit there and say, "Well, we've got a twenty-year agreement potentially." It means a lot to us.
Okay. Mr. Cash wants to make a comment? Dr. Cash wants to make a comment?
I want to ask Mr. Price if, in fact, we, my understanding of the civic center law is that we could not have a twenty-year joint use agreement.
Correct.
So, I was just wondering if that, if, if that might sway the concern you have, because if we were in a mediation or in any legal proceeding, I would imagine that would be an argument that would be raised, is that we're prohibited by law to have an agreement longer than five years. And so, an interpretation that it was twenty years would not, would be in conflict with the law.
Thank you.
Okay. So, Ms. Deacon and then Ms. Lamone?
Well, being a, a glass more than half-full person, I would just like to say that it seems to me we've had a very successful partnership with the folks over at the Luke for, for all these five-year terms, and I certainly don't anticipate, certainly, things can happen, but I, I like to think that we would progress the way we have, and, and it has been successful. And I also think that it would be probably destabilizing and disadvantageous for the district if you were to lose your leverage in terms of fundraising, because it's to our advantage that you fundraise successfully, and we would be in worse shape if you were unable and, and not in a good position to do that. So, I am inclined to go back to the original language, given that, that there were some changes in, in thirteen point three, and perhaps some other board- changes in, in 13.3, and perhaps some other board members will make a comment, but I would just like to put a motion out there that, that the terms of agreement would be reworked. This would be item number one to read. The center has the right to extend this agreement for three five-year terms, as may be agreed to by the center and the district in writing.
I'll second that.
Okay. Ms. Lamone had a comment before we had the motion?
So, and actually, I would like to see if the, it now would be an amendment, because we've, this is our third discussion about this, and the one piece that's new now is that this is ed code, does not allow us to do more than five years. And I would like to see if we can amend the motion to say, "Unless terminated earlier pursuant to the provisions of section 13 hereof, this agreement shall remain in effect for a period of five years, as specified in ed code blank from the date hereof," only because this is the third discussion and we never heard the ed code piece, and so, in some ways, if this comes back in five years, if it's a different board makeup, we know to refer to ed code.
If I could ask, pardon me, by inserting a reference to the ed code, are you also intending to include the language of the additional terms? I wasn't clear from what you said.
Well, I think that the motion was to include the language of the additional code, so that would stay, but then we would cite just the ed code piece, so we know that that's our safety.
Yes. Mr. Young, do you have the previous version, so we could see the previous language?
In my office.
Oh, I think we have a copy here with Ms. Heron if you...
Do you have any?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay. So, I just wanted to clarify, going back to the question that Mr. Latham raised, that my intent is for us to have this agreement ongoing. I would like to see us continue to have the, basically, the setup that we currently have. I think it's working. I think it meets the needs of the community as well as the district, and so, I would like to have language that basically makes that as likely to continue as possible. And I think our previous language did do that. I would hope that that language that we see up there would also do it if we changed it from one to addition, to plural, but I'm happy to go with the previous language if that seems to be satisfactory. I think that was the language that you had prior, and so, I assume, Mr. Latham, that that would be satisfactory to you? Okay. So, if you would read it, Mr., is that, okay, if you could read that, Mr. Heron?
Unless terminated earlier pursuant to the provisions hereof, this agreement shall remain in effect for a period of five years from the date hereof, and the center has the right to extend this agreement for three additional five-year periods upon terms as may be agreed to by district in writing at the termination of each five-year period.
Okay. Thank you. So, the motion was originally made, I think, based on our revised language, so...
And I'm, I'm happy to accept the amendment about the reference to ed code, the five-year Civic Center...
And are you, and are you willing to accept the amendment to go back to the original language, or no?
It's fine, I think it's the same, isn't it?
Well, actually, there, there is, there was a change, and that is, it says the center and the district, so, you know, the only...
Right, it should say both.
So, I actually think that the, the new, the new language is better, as long as Mrs. Deacon and revisions and Ms. Lamone's revisions are included, rather than the absolute original, because the absolute original didn't include center.
Didn't? Okay.
What Mr. Heron just read did not include the word.
Okay, I'm sorry. So, were we adding the three five-year terms?
That was the motion, yes.
Okay.
May I ask, can it, can it say three five-year periods upon terms as may be agreed, so that that's just the...
Yes, yes. Can, can it, Mr. Price?
I'm asking Mrs. Deacon, actually, since she was the one that made the motion.
Oh, oh, okay, I'm sorry, I thought you were asking for, for a legal opinion.
So, the language would read, "For three additional five-year periods," plural, "upon terms as may be agreed to by the center and the district," in writing. At the termination of each five-year period.
Is that acceptable to you, including Ms. Lamone's language as well?
The reference to the ed code? Okay.
And, and I'll accept that as my, as the secondor.
Okay, so, I hope that we are all clear on what that motion is.
Glad to speak to that.
Yes. Is there...
Is this a motion on this particular item and not, and not the whole agreement?
No, I think the motion was for the entire agreement.
Because I've got other questions on the entire agreement.
Okay, the motion was for the entire agreement with the change to this particular item made. So, in the, in the process of discussion, then, if you have another question about something else in the agreement?
Yes, a couple of us have asked for the exact numbers of benefits. What is the cost of the benefits that the district is paying? And Mrs. Cagnani, you said you had those numbers?
Yeah, it's $8,500 per employee.
And that includes retirement?
No, it does not include retirement.
And we're paying retirement, so what is retirement on top of that?
I had that number for you at the last board meeting.
You, you said 22%, but I don't know what that means.
So, maybe a clarification as to exactly, you want to know exactly the, the salary and then all, everything added, total compensation?
All the agreement says we pay the benefits for two employees. All we're asking is, what does that mean? How many dollars is that?
Okay.
It's the health and welfare and statutory benefits. Yeah, statutory benefits. So, on a classified employee, it's about 24%.
Yeah, between 24 and 26%.
So, and I don't know what the salary is, though, if that's the issue.
I don't remember that off the top of my head.
Okay, so, I think the answer to the question at this point is, we, we don't have that information.
But we'll get it in five minutes.
No, it's okay, I mean...
And actually, to tell you the truth, my recollection, I'm going to be close, because I, I know I've been asked to research this at least three or four times by a prior board member, it's right around $20,000.
Total.
Total.
Okay. Fine, I just...
Per employee?
No.
No, for the whole thing.
Oh, total, total, okay.
Because the benefit cost is 7,800 to 8,000, we're going to be right around 20.
I would just make a comment that when...
That's what I remember.
10 years ago, when you were discussing this and getting it off the ground, there was probably valid reason for the district paying the benefits. I, my only question would be, does that, does that still hold true? Obviously, it does, because we're paying it. On page five in the agreement, it says that "We are not to include retirement benefits absent the prior written approval of the superintendent." In answer to my question, we received an answer two weeks ago, that the superintendent never did make that approval, but is it PERS mandated that we pick up the tab for retirement for the, well, put it this way, that the, the two employees get retirement benefits? And my question is, did that, did that decision force us to pay it, or is that something that, since we never agreed to pay it, that the center should be paying it? Or could be asked to pay it? I, I don't know anybody, I just, you know, because I'm not sure why we still have that sentence in paragraph five, if it's no longer valid, or in page five, if it's no longer valid, then the follow-up question is, since it has to be paid, who made the decision, if the superintendent did it, didn't, that the district is going to pay it?
Well, if you're talking about health insurance, I'm not sure about...
No, retirement.
Okay, so, you're talking about the PERS. If he works over, or they work over $1,000, a thousand hours a year, they have to be put into PERS.
Okay.
And that's, that's mandatory.
Okay, but who has to pay it?
Well, they pay their share, and we pay their, we pay their share of...
But if we never agreed to do it, is that something that the center could have offered to pay?
I suppose so.
My, my comment would be, yes, they, they could reimburse the, the district for the cost of that.
So, if somebody made the decision, and it wasn't the superintendent, that we're going to pay it. The district has to pick up that cost. And that's why I say, somebody made that decision, it wasn't the superintendent, which this agreement says should have been. So, my follow-up question is, is that a sentence in those parentheses that we could take out? Again, not to have this question come up five years from now. So, that, that would be one suggestion, if, if that makes sense, to eliminate those words in the parentheses, talking about retirement benefits, being approved by a superintendent that never did happen. And then, another picky one, that probably is outside the purview of the agreement, but just in practice, in the rental agreement documents for the, for the center, it says that if somebody rents the facility, you pay the cost of the technical director plus 27% fringe benefits. And I have no idea how much that amounts to, but I presume those fringe benefits are what we're already paying. So, do we get credit for those if you're collecting them from the users? That's outside the agreement, but it is a question I would have eventually. If you collect money for the technical director's fringe benefits from the users, do we also reimburse those benefits and you pick up those into your general account? That's, take that out of this agreement discussion, just as a point of procedure.
Edward.
On page five. When I refer to fringe benefits, that's in your documents that talk about what you charge users. It's the rental, we got that two weeks ago at the meeting. It showed all, what a user has to pay per hour for certain employees, one of them is technical director, and in an asterisk, it says, "Taxes, payroll, workers' comp, insurance, gross rate wages at 27% fringe." This is included on all labor charges, included but not limited to technical director fees and additional labor. So, it sounds to me like you're collecting 27% on the technical director's wages, and then we're paying all the benefits.
Can I, do you mind if I step in here? We'd be happy to take that out of the rental agreement. The, the bottom line and the fact is that we're not double-dipping.
That's my question.
Yeah, we're not double-dipping, period, end of story. But if you'd like to have that taken out of the rental agreement, we'd be happy to do that, we can do that tomorrow morning.
Well, you keep it in and just reimburse us.
Well, with the, the thing is, is there's nothing to reimburse you for.
Okay.
We're not double-dipping.
Okay. Ms. Parker?
All right, so now, my question goes to Mr. Price, because with the language in 4.1 on page five, that says, "The professional theater staff will be deemed to be employees of the district." Clearly, according to PERS, we are required to pay retirement benefits, and so, that, that parentheses, that statement in parentheses seems to be not useful at all, and in fact, could be confusing, since it's, it has nothing to do with the approval of the superintendent, it's mandated by PERS. So, is there any problem with us simply removing that statement in parentheses?
No, I think that would be appropriate, and it would avoid confusion in the future.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to suggest that we remove that.
I was going to do that, too, so I think we all agree. Thank you, Mr. Heron, for pointing that out. It really doesn't need to be there.
Okay. I'm sorry, are we now ready to call the question?
Well, then I have the, what page is, was that just a separate thing on the, on the user fees? Where are we?
Yes, that was on the rental agreement.
Okay, so that's not actually part of...
No.
No, that's not part of our, our vote or...
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, so, are we ready to vote on this? Okay. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Latham, for your patience.
Thank you very much.
I would like to make a comment.
Yes?
Is that the piece on the education code satisfied me to the point that I'm comfortable with the new, the new language.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Okay.
Excuse me, could I, a point of clarification? Who was the first and second on that? I didn't, can say it. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we are actually a little bit ahead, but we are at our break, so we will take a 10-minute break, and then we will return for our conference agenda. So, thank you. Okay, I think we can reconvene our board meeting with our conference agenda, item F1, a report on district implementation of Common Core standards, and Ms. Waskey will be presenting this to us.
Thank you, and I have a, a very educated team here with me. Joanne Caines from Lacumbra Junior High, Emilio Handel from McKinley, and Sean Carey from Dos Pueblos. All of these principals were part of the team that went to the Model Schools Conference this summer, and they had their leadership team, so they know a whole lot about Common Core state standards, and what you have, I realize, as an, as an attachment, is our, are, are talking points. So, we're going to go down and kind of explain what are Common Core, just, this is a very brief introduction to this. Some of you have been at some of the work that we conducted last spring, so you know a little bit more maybe than others, and, and probably even more than some of our teachers, and I'm going to tell you later how we're going to get that going. But it's really what are they, when, what's the timeline, why are Common Core so important, and how our district is planning to implement it, and then kind of where we are now. And we have some accompanying slides that we're going to go along with it. You also should have received the gap analysis report that we got survey data and other kinds of data from last spring. There's appendix areas where you'll notice there's like about 10 responses in some of them, that was, that's representative of each school that responded. So, it was a principal, in most cases, a leadership team that responded to that. I'm going to have this, I just sent a note to Barbara Kiani and Linda Steele this evening to have, make sure this document and others, that the talking points and others, as we begin our work, are up on our website. So, we want to make sure that, you know, the public, but certainly our teachers, have access to all of this. And each school that participated in this, and there were more than 10 schools, but each school has their own individual school survey results. This is a compilation of the whole district. And then you also had a couple of white papers from William Daggett and Ray McNulty from the International Center for Leadership and Education, and they're just information about Common Core and the next generation assessments. So, I'm going to stop with that, I'm going to bring up Joanne Caines to start our introduction.
Good evening, Joanne Caines from Lacumbra Junior High, and it's my privilege to give just sort of a brief introduction, because when we talk about standards, we're now going to be talking about a different kind of standard. At a time when we wonder, can our country come together, I have to tell you that 10 years ago, 48 states, two territories, and the District of Columbia have been working for 10 years to come up with some common outcomes for 20th century, 21st century learners. And those are called common standards, meaning that they are national standards. And so, California adopted these standards in June of 2010, and of course, our worry in California is, well, our standards are really rigorous, so what about our rigor? And so, states are allowed to add 15% of their own standards on top of the Common Core standards. So, when we're talking about standards now, we're going to be not talking about the discrete content standards, but learning outcomes, which is really exciting. These standards will begin to be assessed in 2014 and 15 across the country.
Okay. Sean? We'll have Sean Carey come up and talk about, a little bit about why we're doing this.
Good evening, Board. Dr. Cash, Mr. Smith, you probably, the reasons why we need this might be obvious to you, but it is worth taking some time to make them explicit, and I'm going to discuss three reasons that are the why behind the National Common Core State Standards. And the first is the, the global achievement gap, and we worry about our students in the United States falling ever more behind in competition with their counterparts in other countries. Part of what we reviewed last week was a statistic that tells us that the largest English-speaking nation by 2016 will actually be China, and that there are more honor students in China than there are people in North America. So, we know about outsourcing, we know our students... We know our students have to have more competitive skills in the job market. And we know that our country needs to be, needs to rise up and wake up from a kind of complacency that threatens our ability to keep a viable economy. So that's certainly one reason. A second reason is we need our students to be more college and career-ready, and that's a board-focused goal, as we know. It's something that we are focusing more on. But we need multiple measures for what that looks like and means. This slide here shows you Lexile scores of typical texts that a person might encounter, a young person might encounter. So along the left side there, along the Y-axis, you see Lexile scores from 600 to 1,600. The first bar is, represents Lexile scores, a range of Lexile scores for high school literature, fiction, not expository texts. Then you get to college literature, so the kind of novels or plays you'd be reading in college. If you look at high school textbooks, the rigor is higher. College textbooks, even higher. And of course, a lot of our students are accessing college literature, college-level literature and textbooks in our high school courses. But military, the texts that the military use are 1,200. One thing that seems surprising at first, but actually isn't surprising if you think about it, is the Lexile levels of most texts that we access for personal use. So if you think manuals for your appliances that you purchase, or I always use the example of a voter information guide, you know, somebody who has a graduate degree and was a social studies teacher and still has trouble sometimes navigating through our voter information guide. Entry-level occupations and industry are right up there with it. And slightly below that are the College Board SAT, ACT, AP kinds of course materials. So this gives us a sense that the kind of reading that we're having students do, especially if we haven't shifted to an emphasis on expository texts, is simply not preparing our students for the literacy, with the literacy skills that they need to be prepared for career and college, in those cases where university is part of the pathway to career, which is hopefully most cases for our students. The only other caveat I would add here is that we often think about students who are traditionally not as ready for college and career, and I think that we have to be mindful of the fact that many of our students that we graduate as college-ready actually get to college and find they are not, in fact, college-ready. And what the city colleges are telling us is that they're having to do lots of remediation with our high school graduates, even folks that graduate from university. And I know some, and in some ways, this was true of me as well, are not necessarily career-ready. It's being, it's that learning on the job and that relevant learning that the Common Core state standards really bring into the K-12 schools that has been missing, certainly in the last decade. The third reason, the third piece of the rationale for the move to and the embracing of the national Common Core state standards is student engagement. This looks like an all-too-familiar scene from my personal life these days, but student engagement, we know and we've been sensing, and if you ask any teacher in their heart of hearts how they are gauging student engagement in recent years, they will tell you that it has been waning. We know that we have students who learn differently in the 21st century than the way that we learned. Most of us learned things based on theory, and then we applied them to real-world situations. Most of our students today won't even remember having existed in the 20th century. They will only have memories of the 21st century. And in the 21st century, they encounter the real world through TV and gaming and internet and smartphones. And from that, they go off an inquiry to find the theory that helps them understand it. So we're actually wired differently in our brains from the generation of students that we're teaching. You'll see in your gap analysis reports some survey data that points out some really disturbing discrepancies between the way teachers rate student engagement and the way students rate student engagement. And there's a couple pairings that are even more powerful than the ones that you see here, but there are in some cases 50 and 60 percentage point discrepancies between teachers and students in terms of their perceptions, this is perception-based data, but about student engagement. And there'll be things like, you know, "I make learning fun and interesting," or "It's relevant to the real world." You'll have 80 or 90 percent of teachers saying that that's true. You'll, and then we'll look, and especially at the secondary level, if you look at the comparison guide, grade seven through 12, you'll have 20 or 30 percent of students saying that that is true. There are some other things in there for you to unpack, but those are the three main reasons I wanted to speak to you about tonight, as far as why this is such a welcome change for us in education in the Santa Barbara Unified School District.
Okay, and following right along, how we're going to implement the Common Core standards. We have a district-wide strategic plan that we're going to be coming together in September, and I mentioned that September 22nd and 23rd, we welcome anyone that would like to join us with that. We're going to be looking at the gap analysis that we have, the data from that. Every school will have a representative, so I was just talking to Lane Wheeler about how best to make that happen, so that we definitely have teachers involved in this process, because obviously, they are the ones that are going to be most involved in really changing practice and having a clear direction and knowing why we're doing this and what it means to them. Over the next three years, we're going to be doing a lot of talking about the rigor and relevance and how we are increasing our rigor and relevance from a low level of both, think multiple choice questions on tests, up to the highest level, which is in quadrant D. And that really talks about, you go to classrooms sometimes, and the teacher's doing a whole lot of the work, the most work in that classroom. Moving over a little bit more on the relevant scale, the students are actually doing most of the work, and we see a lot of this going on. But even getting more at a rigor level, a higher level rigor level, we're looking at students actually thinking, and we're talking about, you know, critical thinking and all of that. And then here, students really thinking and doing the work. And that looks like a simple way of looking at it, but when you really visit a lot of classrooms, you can definitely see all of this going, and we really need to get everybody going up that direction. The other thing that's going to change a lot are the assessments that will be going along. And I, it's hard to read some of those, but, and these are kind of a joke, but I'll read the one on the far right. Johnny's science class for four weeks has been devoted to practice drills for the state reading exam. If he takes two end-of-grade tests over three days, how many Disney videos will he see in class during the last two weeks of school? Unfortunately, that may be happening, but it's the kind of idea that you're really applying things that are happening. And on, again, the rigor-relevance scale, we're looking at, down here right now, we're looking at multiple choice constructed response. That's pretty much what our state tests are about. The, going up on the knowledge scale, extended response and product performance, performance-based assessments. Going further over on the application scale, but still at a lower level, process, performance, product performance. And then up at the top, using portfolios, product performance, interviews, self-reflection, a lot more higher-level thinking skills in our assessment category there. You can see that along with looking at the instruction and the assessments, we will be looking at instructional materials, including technology. We'll be looking at lots and lots of professional development to support our teachers and our administrators, all of us, and how we move up that way. Evaluation's going to change. We heard a lot about that at the Model Schools and the other work that we've been doing, not only with the International Center for Leadership and Education, but pretty much everything you read, there's a lot of change in evaluation. And then even scheduling in the school day structure. So, whoops, let me go back to that. So we've got a lot of work to get up this way. This is just a very brief overview, and I'm going to have Emilio now talk about where we are now.
Good evening, members of the Board, Dr. Cash, Mr. Smith. There's a lot going on nationally. We have a lot of things that are going to impact public education as we know it today. But one of the things that has happened with the foresight of district leadership is we've tried to get out in front of some of the things that are coming, trying to lessen the blow, if you will, of when these assessments, these next-generation assessments come barreling down our faculty, our staff, and our students' way. So some of the things we've done already is we have a partnership with the International Center for Leadership and Education for the next three years that are going to give us technical support, as well as some insights, because they're pretty well-involved at the national level with all of these Common Core assessments and a lot of the nuances, if you will, of the things that they include. So one of the things our districts has done, our district has done already, has been to align our kindergarten report cards to Common Core standards. And if any of you have ever worked or had a discussion with the kindergarten staff or group, it's sometimes, they can challenge you in terms of wanting to see things very concretely. And working with them, the district leadership did an incredible job of getting this report card aligned to the Common Core standards, sir. So they're already on board. They're already, you know, ready to go. We're going to be knocking out a few grades as we go in the next few months and years, so hopefully we'll be well-aligned once the Common Core assessments are fully implemented. Other things the district has done, and has been contracting with people like Bill Jacob, we have Kate Consella, we have Jonathan LaMaster. These are all people who are very well-versed and are great trainers in thinking about that rigor and relevance in terms of instruction and planning. That helps our instructors, obviously. It helps our students, and it has been a tremendous boost, and it's really helped us, I know at our site, and I know with a lot of different teachers as I talk to them across the district. Other things that are helping are our PLCs, our data analysis, Avid, Read180. This is all aligned to what Common Core is going to be, you know, presenting to us in the very near future. Lastly, and I've said this a couple times, but our district leadership, hopefully, will continue this good work and begin to really include the staff throughout the district, teachers and teacher leadership, to help get this ball rolling and get the information out there. And with putting it down into the internet on our website, I think it's going to really help a lot of people as they try and maneuver this new challenge that we have coming our way. Thank you.
Okay, and the page that was the attachment, all of the principals got at the leadership meeting we had, and this is what they use as a guide for this week's staff meeting. So I heard a lot of talk about Common Core, and this, we'll put this up on the website, and people can refer to it as kind of our guide at this point. One real bright spot I saw this week is that Emilio and Amy Alzina at Adams School had one of the national trainers, Bernie Lambert, come that they got to see at Model Schools this summer. She was just amazing and had both of their staffs really digging into literacy kinds of strategies, and that was very exciting. On October 31st, which is our professional development day, that we have a great opportunity, the first time in a long time, mid-year, we have a time when all of our staff will have people-free days. We have Sue Gendron, who, coming from, she's a senior consultant for International Center for Leadership and Education, and she is California State Consultant on the Next Generation Assessments and Smarter Balance, which our state has just selected as a consortium to use. So she's going to be with us on the 31st. We'll have secondary and elementary separately. And then she's going to stay with us. She's going to be here in Santa Barbara for three days, and on, that would be November 2nd, she's actually going to work with our first and second grade teams on the alignment of ours, you know, like kindergarten work to the Common Core. So we're going to pack that room so that we have a lot of people in there understanding her process and how to move forward. So we've got a lot going, but I will entertain questions if you have any.
Okay, Board members? Ms. Parker?
I just want to say thank you, thanks to all of you. And I want to particularly say thank you to the three principals that are here, because I know that life is crazy for you right now, and Thursday is around the corner. So thank you so much for taking the time out to be here this evening.
Yes, ditto, ditto, ditto.
But I also just wanted to say, I'm so relieved to hear, I mean, I knew about kindergarten, and I think first and second were working last year, so hopefully that's just about ready to roll out, because we can't suddenly implement in 14, 15. I mean, it has to be rolled out, or it'll be a disaster. So thank you, it sounds great. I'm looking forward to September. I actually, I'm a parent in the district, and I had not realized that Halloween, there will be no school. So I'm just going to say as an aside that I hope that that's publicized separately to parents soon.
We will need to do that. Ms. Deacon?
Ditto on the thank you. Great presentation. I really enjoyed the report as well. Really interesting reading. So much to process. One of the things I focused in on though was the high expectations piece. And I guess a question I have, although it's answered somewhat, is how are we going to define for staff and students what high expectations look like?
That's a great question, and that's something we'll be digging into when we start our work, because that piece alone, that engagement part and the high expectations, those are huge, kind of soft things. You have to figure out what are the indicators.
Right, right. And the other piece that, and this is part of the discussion, is how do we involve parents as well in this high expectation piece? One of the statistics that jumped out, and it was one that was cited somewhat, was the report noted only 50 percent of our secondary students indicate that students at school care about doing well academically. And I think we need our parents to partner with us on that, so the students can take responsibility for their own learning. And there's great organizations like Padres Unidos and others that we can look to, to assist us in that, but I think that's a real important place to start as well. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Herron?
I'll just comment, I'm glad that you mentioned that each school got their own report. And I just hope that someone is analyzing the comparison between the schools to see who's really doing something great and who may be not doing so great. The one sentence in this report, that each school must exercise its autonomy and authority to implement that vision in a way that makes sense, given the school's unique characteristics and culture. I agree, I, you know, I'm a supporter of schools having autonomy, but I hope it's within the guidelines that the district has and the vision the district has, and somebody monitors that. It's nice to have a culture of local control and autonomy, but let's make sure it's under the roof of what we want.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. That is a reason why we have that. We had this sheet, we talked, we worked quite a bit on how do we roll this out, so that every principal's saying the same thing as far as the district vision. And that'll come together much more clearly in September when we have specifics to the plan.
Ms. Lamone?
Well, I'm excited, and I can say that there's colleagues in higher ed that are actually looking as to how this will impact higher ed and teaching and learning in college. And so I'm excited to see what comes out of it. I'm really excited that on some of your teams that you described, you do have folks locally from UCSB who are working with you in trying to conceptualize this and work this through. I also, I just have to note that I thought it was interesting, not just the responses from the teachers and the students, but also anecdotally, some of the information that we've heard sometimes was like, could have been a third column, because some of it didn't match with some of the things that I hear from folks all the time. And so I just, I want to note that it was really interesting to see how, the survey responses, and compare that to what we have heard from maybe students or from teachers as well.
And I just wanted to add how, I mean, I thoroughly enjoyed reading this report. I thought, and I want to echo what Ms. Lamone said, because when I was reading it, I was thinking, these are areas that at, in higher ed, we are emphasizing, too. Looking at holding students to high expectations and defining what those high expectations are, even within our own department, we try to make, we struggle to make sure that everybody has the same definition of what high achievement is. Looking at the shared responsibility for core, you know, curriculum, really, that across disciplines, there has to be an emphasis on the importance of reading.
Literacy.
And literacy and math literacy. The use of rubrics to help define what constitutes an excellent achievement, what constitutes maybe just satisfactory achievement, et cetera, and making sure that students know that. Because I think we find so often that students think that the teacher wants one thing, when in fact, you know, we actually want something else, and the student might have been able to produce that if they had realized that's what we were going for. So I just thought there was a lot in there that was really applicable to all segments of education, both K-12 and higher ed. So it was really interesting to read, and I thought I would really like to see, and this is probably going to come in September or thereafter, how we plan to address some of those areas where the report said there needed to be some work done. And so I'd really like to see kind of a follow-up to that. And so I'd, I'd really like to see kind of a follow-up to that, a response to that. And I had, I think Ms. Swasky knows, I had attended a, a workshop in early June regarding the Common Core, change to Common Core curriculum. And I was really excited, as, as Sean, you were saying, it is kind of an exciting thing, I think. The emphasis is, I feel, has shifted away from just standardized testing to really some higher-level thinking and things that I think are really much more what education is actually about. So I share the excitement about this, and I'm glad that we are moving ahead in very proactive ways. So I appreciate your report. Thank you.
And I would be neglecting something important if I didn't add it. The assessments are all gonna be online. So we will have three years to get ready for that. So in light of our parcel tax and other things we've been talking about, technology is a huge piece in this. So you'll be hearing much more about that.
I noted in the report that, that was mentioned that only 40% of the students say that passing the, the state exams were their, like, the most important thing for them in school. And I have to say, I was actually happy to see that. I thought, I am so glad that they don't consider that the most important thing in life or in their education. I, I understand the thought behind it was that we want to get them to take the test a little more seriously, and we hope that they will see it as very important. But I'm glad that they recognize that there are other things happening in their education that are actually more important than taking a test. So, I, I thought that was good.
Okay, thank you very much.
Can I make one comment, once we have three principals here? I just, I'm happy to see the smile on Emilio's face with his new parking lot and his wireless. I'm sure you must enjoy that, or you will enjoy that, I hope. And I, I hope we handled your squirrel population, so you don't have so many students on campus and get rid of some of those squirrels. I hope we did it, La Cumbre. I hope so. And Sean, I have to say, I, I complimented Mr. Hattie on the condition of the schools that I, as I visited schools, and I went through yours, and I complimented David on the grounds. And he said, "Don't look at me, it's the principal." So, I think your, your grounds are looking much, much better, and I really appreciate the effort you obviously put in on that. But more importantly, your new Charger online newspaper. I enjoy that. I enjoyed your 10 questions and answers. I loved your power up, not power down. I know that's Dr. Cash, but the fact that you, I know, but the fact that you see that and understand that importance and what a difference that is from three years ago. So, I really appreciate it.